Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing sponsored by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Veterans Affairs, Homeland Security, and Judiciary. I'd like to, before I highlight the agenda, welcome my colleagues who have joined us this morning thus far, to my immediate right, Senator Brad McCready, to my immediate left, Senator Tommy Morrison, and to his immediate left, Senator Eileen Amashira. Thank you very much, senators, for joining us this morning. On the agenda, which is our several pieces of legislation. One is Bill Number 301, and we will highlight them as we proceed with the overall discussion, and that is relative to the crime of unsworn falsification. Bill Number 302, that's 32COR, which is relative to establishing fines and penalties for individuals who make false statements to a Guam Customs Officer. Bill Number 317, that's 32LS, relative to the crime of phishing, P-H-I-S-H-I-N-G. And Bill Number 318 is relative to creating the Computer Protection Act. And then finally, we will close out the discussion this morning. We'll be on number 319, that's 32LS, relative to creating the Computer Spyware Protection Act. And just for the information of the public in compliance with the public notification requirements, the initial notice was sent out to all the senators, as well as the stakeholders, on the 18th of April. It was in print on Friday, again, on the 18th of April, with the second notification for public hearing, sent out on the 23rd of April to all the stakeholders. And then finally, a print on the 23rd, same day, Wednesday, the 23rd, in regards to the agenda for this morning's discussion. We do have the first item, like I alluded to, in regards to Bill Number 301, which is the Unsworn Falsification Bill, and it's sponsored by Senator Brad T. McCready. For, if I can invite the following individuals, please, Mr. Pedro Leon Guerrero, Mr. Pete Tovis, Paul Tovis, as well as Mr. Ray Beneventi, if he can join us up front, for Bill Number, that's 302. Anyone for 301? I apologize. On Bill Number 301, we're going to proceed with Bill 301 initially, and that is relative to the crime of unsworn falsification. And I would like to yield to Senator Brad McCready at this time to be able to provide some brief comments. Senator, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to all the people. As always, thank you for the expeditious hearing of these bills today. Bill 301 amends 52-30 of Chapter 52, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to crime of unsworn falsifications. Now, this bill was drafted after several meetings with law enforcement and public safety agencies. Under the current law, the Guam, the crime of unsworn falsification pertains only to written falsifications made to public officials while in the performance of their official duties. Bill 301 would add a new item B to include a verbal statement made to peace officers or public officials as well. If passed into law, Bill 301 would provide peace officers and public officials another tool to compel individuals to tell the truth or face arrest as potential punishment for willfully attempting to mislead them in the performance of official duties. Once again, I thank you for your hearing today, Mr. Chairman, and I look for great discussion on this piece of legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready, for those comments in regards to Bill Number 301. For the record, we have not only provided public notification in regards to this, but the committee will continue to receive, for the subsequent 10 days from the date of this hearing, comments and written testimonies in regards to Bill Number 301, as just shared with us by the sponsor, Senator Brad McCready. At this time, we do not have any written testimony provided, or nor do we have anyone in attendance to provide testimony, so we're going to proceed. Bill Number 301, that's 32COR, has been publicly heard. Thank you very much again, Senator McCready. We will proceed to Bill Number 302, which is the second item on the agenda, which is relative to establishing fines and penalties for individuals who make false statements to a Guam Customs Officer. I'd like to also, in addition to the individuals that were named a little earlier, Mr. Vincent Perez also has signed in, and Mr. Ralph Campbell Larry has also, I apologize, I didn't mention your name a little earlier, but Mrs. Campbell Larry has also signed in on behalf of Customs and Quarantine. So, Senator McCready, if you can just provide your comments, and then we'll proceed with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Guam Customs, for attending today's hearings. Bill 302 says fines and penalties for individuals who make false statements to Guam Customs Officers. The bill makes it a violation to make a false written or verbal statement or knowingly omit a statement of truth upon questioning and examination by a Guam Customs Officer. The bill sets graduated fines at $500 for the first offense, $1,000 for the second offense, and $10,000 for the third offense and any subsequent offense or violation therefore. The intent of this bill is to limit prohibited items from being brought into Guam. Now, I just want to make it clear that 4730 of Trafficking and Counterfeiting Goods, uh, 9GCA, states that goods bearing counterfeit marked in the possession of a person who intends personal use are permitted. So, we are not going after the person who brings something from an international destination to Guam. What we're doing is we're going after the people who bring it into our commerce and intend to resell these products. This bill was drafted after, like I said, several meetings with Guam Customs, and Quarantine. I appreciate the agency's assistance in drafting this bill, and I look forward to continued cooperation of this bill. I understand there are some amendments that we need to put in, and like I said earlier, amendable to anything that makes the bill better, and I look forward to working with Guam Customs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. Mr. Leon Guerrero, if you can, just do me a favor, everyone, as you provide your testimony, identify yourself on the record, because obviously, when it comes to transcribing, I need to ensure that my people have the opportunity to be able to identify who you are. So, Mr. Leon Guerrero, please proceed.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is enough a day, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Committee of Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Veterans Affairs, Homeland Security, Judiciary. For the record, I am Pedro A. Leon Guerrero Jr., the Director of Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. Thank you for the opportunity to provide written testimony on Bill 302-32, and act to repeal subsection 73127, and to repeal and reenact subsection 73130 of Chapter 73, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing fines and penalties for individuals who make false statements to a Guam Customs Officer. On behalf of the men and women of Customs, I would like to express our support of Bill 302-32, and would like to suggest additional language for consideration. The Customs and Quarantine Agency is a relatively new agency of the government of Guam. Although the function of Customs Enforcement has been around since the 1950s, the agency only recently came into its own right in 1994, and has relied primarily on its original statutes that were developed at that time. Over 60 years has passed since then, and many changes have taken place in the field of Customs Enforcement in terms of our responsibilities, our services, and our capabilities. With changes that include an ever-growing global trade environment, better import and export services, more sophisticated transportation technologies, and unfortunately, more sophisticated methods of smuggling as well, the agency has become ever more challenged to meet our mission mandates. One of the greatest challenges we face is not just the importation of controlled items, but more importantly, having to expend valuable resources toward dealing with persons who fail to declare, or even worse, who conceal regulated items for customs inspection. The impact of false declarations has had a profound effect upon the agency in terms of increased manpower costs, the costs associated with meeting the extra service demands, and the cost of diverting limited resources away from areas that are needed most. With over 1 million passengers arriving each year, together with as much as 16,000 vessels and aircraft, 2.4 billion pounds of cargo, and 1 million parcels and letters, voluntary compliance with the customs laws by importers and travelers alike has become increasingly vital to not only our customs enforcement programs, but also towards the safety of our community and resources. The need for statutes to compel truthfulness to customs and impose sanctions for failing to do so are definitely needed for our island. Not only will it create a positive incentive for importers to declare their items subject to inspection, but it allows customs to focus more attention on those persons with subversive motives, provides additional resources that support the customs border protection programs, and provides funding needed to store and dispose of the regulated items discovered. For these reasons, the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency recognizes the need to update its custom statutes, and just as importantly, to institute a fines and penalties program for violations of the customs and other import laws. Although this bill may not encompass all that is needed, it definitely is a step in the right direction on where customs should be in the near future. To this end, we would like to offer some additional suggestions to perhaps further improve upon the scope and coverage of this bill. For instance, we highly recommend keeping but amending subsection 73127, being that the declaration remains an important element within the customs clearance process. We would like to amend the language of this subsection to include that, quote, "Persons entering Guam are required to complete a custom declaration and are required to present themselves and their goods for customs for inspection." As transportation capabilities to smugglers have become more and more accessible and readily available, the capability for these persons to circumvent the customs inspection process are ever more as so possible. These additions will address these problems. We would also like to propose that the amended subsection 73130 be separated into two provisions. The first portion should address making the failure to comply with these requirements and false statements in violation of law. The second provision should identify the penalties for those violations respectively. Insofar as penalties in the second provision, we propose that a range of fines for each offense level be used rather than a set amount. Doing so will provide greater flexibility to assign a fine amount that is commensurate with the seriousness and extent of the violation of each offense level. As an added provision, we would like to suggest the inclusion of penalty provisions for the failure to pay or late payment of the fines. The penalties may include an interest penalty, as well as collection and/or attorney's fees, as may be allowed by law. We would also like to suggest that the provision be included whereby the directors required to promulgate rules and regulations governing the application and administration of the fines, as well as regulations for the appeal and adjudication of fines levied thereunder. Because these provisions are an inherent part of levying and adjudicating the fines, we suggest that the clause be included whereby the fines authorized under these statutes will not be implemented until such time that the regulations are promulgated and approved. And lastly, we would also like to suggest that the effective date be adjusted to six months in order to afford the Director of Customs enough time to promulgate the required rules and regulations through the administrative adjudication process. Overall, we support Bill 302-32, and have included as an attachment suggested language for the revision identified above. With these adjustments, not only will we be able to retain the original scope of the bill, but we will also be able to incorporate other pressing issues facing customs today. One might seem like a small step to improve our statutory authority here. In actuality, will be a giant leap in building a stronger and more effective customs enforcement program at our borders. In this regard, we fully support this bill with amendments, and kindly urge our senators to support this bill as well. If you should have any questions or would like to discuss this matter further, please contact me at 475-6202, where I can be of service. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide input on Bill 302-32. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon Guerrero, for your testimony this morning. Anyone else in the panel would like to provide testimony? Ralph, Mrs. Campbell Larry, or Ray? Please just identify yourself on the record and proceed.
Good morning, senators, my name is Ray Beneventi. I'm a CD planner, so I consult him for import clearance. As a former customs officer of 25 years, I worked with all the ports of entries, from the port to Davie to Anderson. One of my duties at the customs was to do internal affairs, special investigator for National Marine Fisheries, White Collar Crime Task Force. Now I am a food safety and pre-entry consultant for foreign goods. We fully support the bill being addressed today, but we do have some concerns with some of the clients I represent. One is, are these fines on the spot, or would they be addressed before the cargo is released? Eventually, would these fines hold up the cargo? You know, as people or small businesses, ordering their cargo takes two to three weeks. Now there's going to be delay because of the fine. We fully support customs in addressing the non-invoice cargo items being, trying to enter Guam, but at the same time, it must fully address to the public and to the business committee how these things are all going to come out. Recent tourist arrival of Russians and Chinese, are the customs officers world-versed in translations? You know, is there communication differences? Is the intent of the passenger where they false declare, is that an automatic fine? If he doesn't mark the documentation as a customs form, is that a, is subject to penalty? These are just some of the aspects that we look at in the private industry and in the business community, of a more detailed and a more public SOP on how this thing will affect the industry, at the same time, delay of cargo. Again, we support this bill, and we look forward to the implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beneventi, for your testimony this morning. I'd like to, before I recognize Mrs. Campbell Larry, I'd like to recognize that also Ms. Barbara Tayama from Customs has signed in, and also Mr. Ben Bengilina from Customs and Quarantine. Thank you very much, folks. If you would like to provide testimony, you're more than welcome to join us at the front panel. I'd like to also recognize the arrival of Senator Cruz. Senator Cruz, thank you for joining us this morning. Good to see you. Mrs. Campbell Larry?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, my name is Ralph Campbell Larry. I'm the Chief of Guam Customs and Quarantine, and supported this bill. But there's some added information that I would like to provide the senators, that in the event that there's a fine imposed, I just prefer not just the fine to be imposed, because the person could just pay the fine and just walk out paying the fine. I recommend that you put in a part of that bill that if they do not fill the form out, and refuse to fill the form out, just to declare themselves, that they may be obstructing government operation. Because in my experience, and as a customs officer at the field, some individuals will come in and arrive in the airport or up in the military installations that refuse to fill the form out completely. And that is a problem. Not just declaring their goods, but just to declare themselves arriving into Guam, I think the penalties is fine, but to obstruct your government operation, not to fill the form out, is a tremendous thing that has to be looked at. That not just imposing the fine, that you may be arrested, you should, shall be arrested if you do not fill the form out. Because there are passengers that do not want to fill the form out completely, not even put their name or nothing on. But eventually, they do after waiting, waiting at the airport, and waiting at the airport.
So, when you say currently, the statute, the custom statute, does not allow you guys, or give you the mandate to arrest someone who refuses to fill out the form? What happens if they don't fill it out?
They just do not depart the airport.
You can't depart the airport?
No, you have to fill the form out, complete the form, but there's no, there are penalties.
So what you're saying is you'd rather them be arrested, or threatened to be arrested, before they fill it out?
If they're not cooperative.
Why would they not be cooperative?
I can't answer that. That's a question, I mean, my experience that some people just says, "I'm a U.S. citizen, I defer not to fill the form out." And most of the people that are refusing the form out are U.S. citizens, not foreign travelers. I would like to defer back to Mr. Beneventi regards to the individuals that are coming in from Russia and our newly arrival industry. We've met with the airlines, with Russian airlines, and they are going back to their travel agencies that provide forms, provide all that information about Guam, what the expectations of Guam Customs, and what's required upon arriving to Guam about declaring their goods. Mostly, they are bringing in food products for their own consumption. So, we're already delivered that information to the airlines, and they're going back to every travel agency that is dealing with this industry back there coming to Guam. So, we're working together with them, so hopefully, they will be not bringing in any other prohibited items into Guam, food products.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell Larry. Mr. Tovis, would you like to provide any comments? Please identify yourself on the record.
Major Paul Tovis with the Customs and Quarantine Agency. Good morning, senators. Now, just to talk a little bit more about what Chief Campbell Larry was discussing, I believe that by making the declaration form require a requirement, as well as presenting themselves before customs for inspection, pretty much opens up the venue through which that if they fail to do so or refuse to do so, then they become subject to penalties such as obstruction of government operations. I believe that within the language, it may already address that, but of course, it is a very important concern that we need to explore further, and to make sure that that sequence of application of law is correct or not. Because if not, then it might need to be specifically added to the language of the bill as well. Now, getting insofar as Mr. Ray Beneventi's question concerning the processes and the application of the fee and things like that, that's the reason behind our need to include the requirement for promulgation of regulations. And through that, we'll be able to address all the concerns regarding how it's going to be levied, when it becomes due, and how it's going to be adjudicated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tovis. I'd like you to the sponsor of the legislation first, for opening any questions, follow-up questions.
Thank you, and I'm totally amenable to adding whatever type of language makes this bill passable. Thank you for your concerns, Mr. Beneventi. I just wanted to make some clarifications on Mr. Leon Guerrero's testimony earlier when you talked about the fines. And you wanted some, I guess, you wanted some jurisdiction over, instead of setting a fine at $1,000 and $5,000 and $10,000, or $500, $1,000 and $10,000, you wanted some leeway there. Did you just want to add from 0 to 500, and 0 to 1,000, and 0 to 10,000? Do you believe that maybe after the second one, when we're facing the third offense, that maybe that there should be a mandated fine without the 0 to 10,000? I mean, I think you're right when you say maybe we should give the leeway from the first fine and possibly the second. But on the third one, don't you think it's, that was enough offenses?
Yes, Senator, you know, for me, especially with the adjudication process, I'm sure that if somebody's going to be fined $10,000, they want their day with the director to either try to convince the official that for some weird reason it didn't happen and the stars were aligned wrong or whatever. But you know, if, should the reason, you know, warrant something other than the max, you know, we would just have one leeway to be able. I do agree with you that as, you know, at the third, kind of like a third strike, you're almost kind of like, you know, we're backing in, so. But I think, I think having that, having that opportunity, depending on the severity of what they're bringing in and their motives and whatnot, that's the only reason for the range.
And you feel that just putting a 0 to 500?
Or 0 to 500, and then the next one, the 501, you know, to...
250 to 1,000, and maybe 500 to 10,000, the next one.
Senator, maybe in regards to the third strike, is that we have something in place right now? I think it's Bill 20, I mean, Public Law 2025, the broken seal violation. After the third offense, the individuals that are in, that are in violation, they will be, they will not be able to hold a business license regards to their importations. And Major Paul expanded that regards to that bill, I mean, that law.
Good morning, senators, Major Paul Tovis. Yes, we do have a statute on the books regarding fines, and it's for companies, companies that break the seal on containers. That law is very stringent, just like this one, it only gives one particular fine, which is $25,000 fine, you lose your business license and so forth. Even for the first offense, there's no schedule of penalties. And because of that, it became a very difficult decision to make as to whether or not fine a company $25,000 and do all of that, knowing that that could actually just put out a business, even though the violation may have been unintentional or just, you know, some uninformed. So, that's where we learned the need for having a schedule of offenses, that it works better, and then that gives us the means to go ahead and continue to apply a fine schedule without destroying a person, depending upon circumstance. Now, if it was completely intentional, and the violation was serious, then that's when we still have that flexibility to administer the max. But if it's just someone who didn't understand the form correctly, or was just, didn't want to declare their mango, for instance, then we have a way to mitigate that at a lower rate perhaps, and maybe perhaps to provide them with a way to think about it twice the next time they come into Guam.
How would you approach the language barrier that Mr. Beneventi spoke about earlier? And with that language barrier and the new influx of different origins of tourists coming to our island, do we find that maybe some people don't fill out the declaration form because they don't understand?
That remains a very high possibility. We do have the forms that are prepared in all the different languages that we deal with as they come into Guam. So, if they're not unable to read their language, and we begin to, that's part of our question, do you understand what you've read, you know, do you understand you're not supposed to bring in? We do it as a second tier to the declaration itself. So, we try to ascertain as much as possible whether or not the person actually understood what's being required of them. And perhaps in those situations is where we would apply the fine if we then discover it after we've given them those opportunities to declare it.
Because I just, Mr. Chairman, one last statement, I just want to make sure that we we give the traveler every opportunity to declare whatever he or she is carrying that's deemed illegal in the law that we're presenting. So, that's my main focus. I don't want, I don't want this to be a blanket for customs to be able to say, hey, everybody is now a suspect, you know, rather than just be able to give you two or three opportunities, appearances to tell me what you have or what you don't have.
That's absolutely fair, that's an absolutely fair expectation, I think. Even from a customs enforcement standpoint, we do see this every day where perhaps there might be a language or barrier, or even an understanding barrier. And as much as possible, if it becomes a language issue, we do try to elicit the assistance of anybody else in the, in working within the airport, whether it be through our own customs officials who might speak the language, or the airlines, or even immigrations, just to ensure that whatever we're trying to accomplish, that the person who we're servicing does understand what's being expected of them.
I thank you guys for your hard work, and Mr. Beneventi, I'll definitely make sure we address those concerns, and Mr. Leon Guerrero as well, we'll work together to find the best solution for this.
Senator, if I may add one thing on the Russian visitors that you brought up, which is a really good point, and we've been working, like she said, with the airlines, with the airport and whatnot. The truth of the matter is that we know, we want our Russian visitor to bring a lot of money and spend it in our island. And we try to really explain to them that the part in the bottom, about the $10,000, you know, to declare, it's just to declare it, so that should something happen to them in the future, somebody robbed them, at least, there's a basis that they did in fact bring these amounts of money. So, we're doing our best to do that, and you know, as we're getting, as the business is maturing, that communication is getting better. It is a challenge, and you know, these are really good, these are hard-working tourists coming here to Guam for R and R, and we certainly appreciate that they bring their money here and to spend it. And we just want to, we really try to explain to them, that's not a violation, and it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. We just need them to just declare that they're having it, and we're working that every day, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. Just to follow up with a couple of the questions, and you know, in terms of applying fines and penalties, I know that we would like to the greatest extent possible empower the agencies to be able to provide some citations. But I think we also need to understand the nature of where that border or that line should be drawn, so to speak, because every individual rightfully should have an appeals process, which is what Mr. Beneventi alluded to a little earlier. So, I guess my follow-up question would be, in terms of the rules and regs, because this is an issue that we had discussed previously in a roundtable discussion. What is your process? Can you give us some definitive timelines? Because that can be tied in with this particular proposal, and then we can proceed.
Yes, Senator, well, the rule and regulation process basically entails a public hearing and holding meetings with the public.
Yeah, but where are you in the formulation of the proposed fees? Because I know that in a previous roundtable discussion, we had discussed about updating some of the fees, updating some of the citations, so that in fact, it can be read. about updating some of the fees, updating some of the citations, so that in fact it it can be re- diverted back to Customs and Quarantine for eventual usage. So where are you with the formulation of that? I understand the entire process and I believe our people understand the process about the AAA, being able to formulate it, being able to go out to public hearings, having the chief executive sign off on it and then forward it to the legislature. It's my question is, uh because Mr. Longoro had alluded to, uh we also need to work on our rules and regulations and give us six months so that we can be able to finalize that. So my question is, in terms of the formulation of those rules and regs and adjusting some of those citations and those fees which was discussed previously, where are you with finalizing that before you go out to a public hearing?
Okay, well, right now, um um given, we we were just men, we were just focusing on on the uh should this bill become a law? And and the the typical processes involved with the administrative adjudication law, I feel that that uh we've done, we have a lot of material already on 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 and some ideas insofar as what we feel would be necessary for the appeals process and and how to go about doing it similar pretty much to the traffic courts, how they do it. We're we're planning to probably go with this citation kind of format. And and based on that, they'd have a a date to appear and and then, of course, we'll we'll hold the appeals at that point in time. I don't think that it would be a lengthy process, because after uh the director will have the final say insofar as he listening to what the the circumstances are surrounding the the importation and the level of the fine. And then from there, he may mitigate it or just holds holds fast to what was assessed.
From what I'm hearing right now is that it's still in the formative stages.
Exactly, sir.
It's still in the idea, conceptual stages, rather than the actual written document that it's in its first, second, third draft and then to present be presented to the director, because Mr. Longoro is absolutely right. If in fact, we we are going to move forward with this, there are other components that have to be in place, and one is the appeals process. Because you mentioned that uh very similar to the traffic court, you can schedule a date. In many instances, you're dealing with small businesses. They don't have a date, they don't have a week out. They don't have two weeks out and then they're going to receive their merchandise. It's either they go through an appeals process in an expeditions fashion, uh with all due consideration on the part of the director and our law enforcement officers at Customs and Quarantine. And then they're given that opportunity to either say, yea, yea, nay, sorry, your products are going to be uh confined, confiscated, and they're going to be disposed of properly. So that's that's really where this whole issue about adjusting the fines, adjusting the citations, being able to create a mechanism so that there's an appeals process in place. And these individuals or these business owners have an opportunity to immediately access, or at least within the a reasonable time.
Absolutely.
Immediately access an appeals process so that if there's any questions, because uh the reality is, if you're a second offender, third time offender, fourth time offender, then all the discretion is at at the law enforcement level and the director. If you're an initial so-called alleged offense offender, then in that case, that individual rightfully should be given that opportunity to lease an expedition.
At at this point, sir, I think that that even in our in our brainstorming discussions, really, we didn't uh we didn't have uh, we're not really looking at uh stopping the goods if they're not prohibited or regulated. We're not looking at stopping the goods pending the assessment of the fine and appeal of it. We're going to continue to allow that to go into commerce. Uh now, if there was a serious intent to circumvent uh uh the laws of customs or 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 even taxation or that for those things for that matter, um um or even at the defense level, like if it's the third or fourth, that's when it might become uh subject to detaining the merchandise until the appeals, the appeal process is cleared. All those particulars really do need to be discussed thoroughly, especially with your office as well as the uh the business community. And through the the input and what would be a maniable um uh middle point that's acceptable to everybody, then that's probably the uh process we'll adopt. And that's one of the reasons why I can't really say exactly what it's going to be right now. But we're leaning to, you know, like we said in previous public hearings, you know, we are customs and we do enforce regulations and laws, but we're also very sensitive to the uh the 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 commerce of the island. So so with that said, you know, we will be weighing those things um uh seriously with the business community.
Just understand, at least, I I mean, I with all due respect to the sponsor of the legislation, I would like to ensure that if we're going to increase the fines, that there is an an identified appeals process in place. Now, if we just in the interim provide something in this legislation so that in fact uh every individual or every citizen coming off that plane, regardless as to whether they're returning home or the visitors, understand that the law is on their side in terms of giving them that opportunity to access an appeals process, then in the interim, we'll provide that. I just would hate to see us increasing the fine to a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars. And then the discretion, no offense to anyone, anyone here in our law enforcement at Customs or Quarantine, but for someone to have that direct discretionary authority and then an appeals process not be laid out in terms of how that individual can get himself himself or herself off a red list or a red flag list. Because that's, I I we we always have to be sensitive to the customers and the customers are our people and the community and also our visitors. I just wanted to share that with you. I really appreciate the the encouragement to amend the law and making it mandatory that in fact everyone declare. Because uh keeping someone unnecessarily at the airport for extended period of time, because that's what you do right now before you let him leave the airport. I think it's it's a process that it's an undue unnecessary process. So so reinforcing the the existing code, providing that additional leverage on your part and getting you some additional resources with an appeals process in place, certainly, I think, is is part of a very good discussion this morning, so. Senator Yamasita?
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh welcome to all of you, um to your to your legislature. Um so as a part of the rules and regs promulgation, um what I would also hope is that you structure a formal um awareness package so that anybody who is planning on doing business with our island, uh whether it's to our travel agencies or travel websites, uh when they go there, they'll see uh what the rules are, what the consequences are of not following the rules, and the appeal process, the whole thing. Perhaps when they file their uh uh business privilege tax or GRTs, we s- we give them another reminder that, you know, and then it's got to be constant, it's got to be consistent. Uh the idea that you're reaching out to the travel agencies, I think, is excellent. Uh but we need to do the same thing for all of our businesses, everyone who's uh doing commerce with us. We do it with the Guam Hotel Restaurant Association, with the Chamber, with everybody who imports, all of our our wholesalers. And so we develop a formal program, and then when you do your public hearing, uh that would be a part, it's it's a whole prevention part of it. And so what makes it understandable, accessible, um what needs to be changed? And so then that way, as much as possible, we don't have anyone who says, but we didn't know, right? But we didn't know. We help them know. And then but through your promulgation process, they can make it uh even better. And then I think that's complete, so it's your prevention, and then it's your intervention, and then it's judgment, and then it's an appeals process, and then it's a final, you know, statement like that. Thanks. And then, you know, hopefully we can get our invasive species all tied into this as well, and you know, we just merge everything, because it seems like we're uh promulgating more and more rules and regs these days, but if we can weave everything together, that'd be even uh better. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamasita. Any other questions or inquiries? If not, yeah, gentlemen, thank you very much for your testimony this morning. I'd like to uh open the panel discussion to a John Vimanjola, who has signed up in favor. If in fact you would like to provide testimony, if not, then then you signed in. Uh Mr. Basil O'Malley from the Attorney General's Office, please. Are you going to provide testimony? Okay, so for the record, Mr. O'Malley, Attorney O'Malley is in support of the legislation from the Attorney General's Office, and they will be providing subsequent written testimony. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Malley. With that in mind, Bill number three oh two, that's thirty-two C O R, has been publicly heard, and the committee will continue to receive public testimony over the course of the next ten days, and then we will close out on the committee report, so we invite the the public to provide testimony should they desire to do so. The committee will now proceed to Bill number three one seven, that's three three two L S, which is relative to the crime of phishing, P H I S H I N G. That's phishing. And I'd sponsor by Senator Tommy Morrison, and I'd like to uh identify these or provide the senator an opportunity to provide brief comments. But before he does, if I can invite Mr. Jesse Rojas, if by any chance you're going to provide testimony, please join us at the panel. Uh Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I I appreciate the uh prompt turnaround and hearing for Bill uh three seventeen and the follows of three eighteen and three nineteen. Uh in honor of that, uh Mr. Chair, I I did my best to match my shirt with your tie, so thank you.
So noted, thank you, Senator.
Uh Bill seventeen is the Anti-Fishing Act. This act punishes individuals who use deceptive means to steal bank account numbers, social security numbers, and passwords from the internet. From the listening, for the listening audience, phishing is the act of attempting to acquire information such as usernames, passwords, and credit card details by masquerading as a trustworthy entity entity in electronic communication. The bill will make fraud via phishing a third degree felony and fine criminals up to twenty-five thousand dollars per violation. The bill would also allow victims to recover up to two million dollars in civil damages. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look forward to testimony.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison, and uh just as a response to the chair, thank you for providing this legislation, because I think it's long overdue. Thank you. Um Mr. Rojas, please identify yourself on the record and proceed.
How about it, gentlemen? Um and senators, uh good morning. Uh my name is Jesse Ross with the uh Office of Technology. I'm currently here um uh in support of the uh all three bills. I'm unable, though, to make any comment. Well, as for my immediate supervisor, Joey Manabusen is unable to attend. He's currently away and I tend to uh.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. Will your office be providing written testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at this time, you're not able to respond to any direct questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're just extending your support. Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. Senator Morrison?
No further questions. Uh Mr. Chair, I thank you for the uh providing testimony. I look forward to incorporating further testimony within this uh ten day period uh that uh will come from the Office of Technology. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On that note, thank you again, Mr. Ross, for your testimony, and I'd like to recognize, committee will recognize that Bill number three one seven, that's three two L S, has been publicly heard, and the committee will continue to receive written testimony over the subsequent ten days from today. Now, we will proceed to Bill number three one eight, that's three two L S, which is relative to creating the Computer Protection Act, sponsored by Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I will provide you with a couple of minutes for your brief comments and then opening comments, and I will proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill eight, three eighteen is the Computer Protection Act. This bill punishes individuals who use computers and or internet connections of others for the purposes of spamming with the intent to deceive or mislead recipients or an electronic mail service provided as to the origin of the me- of the message. For the listening audi- audience, spam is relevant irrelevant or inappropriate messages sent on the internet to large number of recipients. And again, key to this legislation is there needs to be an attempt to deceive, mislead, and defraud using spam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. We do have again Mr. Rojas and then Mr. Attorney Basil O'Malley. Did you want to provide testimony or? Written testimony will provide subsequent to today. And you are in support of the legislation. Mr. Ross? Same comments?
Yes, sir.
As it applies to Bill number three one eight. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for joining us this morning. So Bill number three one eight, that's three two L S, relative to creating the Computer Protection Act, is hereby publicly heard. And the committee will continue to receive written testimony ten days subsequent to this hearing. Moving forward to Bill number three one nine, relative to creating the Computer Spyware Protection Act, we also have Mr. Rojas and Attorney uh Basil O'Malley from the Attorney General's Office signed in to provide testimony. And I would like to recognize the sponsor of the legislation, Senator Morrison, for the opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The third internet crime bill today is Bill nine, three nineteen, the Computer Spyware Protection Act. This bill punishes individuals who, without the knowledge or permission of the owner, place spyware on another uh another computer. For the listening audience, spyware is software that enables a user to obtain or convert information from another computer's activities by transmitting data covertly from their hard drive. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and look for their uh for testimony.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. Mr. Rojas, can I ask you, I mean, you're working out of the uh Office of Technology?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
Yes, can I just ask you a quick question? It's a general question. How does the local legislation, proposed legislation differ from anything on the federal level that would protect uh the interests of citizens and the rights of citizens? Because I do know that even from the federal level, there are certain legislation, and perhaps this may be included in your testimony. If you're not able to respond to that, then I will respect that. But I would like to request uh some comments or some reference to that. How federal legislation, uh obviously, it always trumps local legislation, but how federal legislation provides some protective mechanism so that we're not doubling up, but we're reinforcing the intent of the sponsor in in terms of protecting our our consumers and our citizens. Okay, please, if if I can present that that request on behalf of of the committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And the committee does recognize that Mr. Rojas and Attorney O'Malley are both present, and they will be submitting written testimony subsequent to today's date. And they are both in favor of the proposed legislation. Senators, is there any comments or questions? Senator Yamasita, please.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a a real basic question. I'm just um maybe a little confused. You're from the Office of Technology, sir?
Uh yes, ma'am.
And so um in the opening, you said that you were here for um Mr. Joey Manabusen. Did I hear that correctly?
Uh he's currently was unable to attend.
Yes, yes. Um what happened to Will Castro?
Oh, at this time, I'm not sure. Uh I know he was our acting CTO um at uh our chief, and uh I know he is uh assigned to the uh uh special assistant for the governor uh with regards to telecommunications and cyber awareness.
Okay, so he's not in the op? Oh, I see. Okay, I thought he um. All right, so it's Joey then. Joey remains in position.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamasita. Any other questions, inquiries, or comments? If not, Bill number three one nine, that's three two L S, is hereby, the public hearing has been conducted and completed, and the committee will continue to receive written testimony for the ten days subsequent to this hearing. To all the senators who have joined us this morning, thank you very much, senators, for your presence and for your contribution in this particular public hearing. I'd like to invite all of you to join us during the roundtable discussion scheduled for this evening with regards to the draft SEIS. And I'd like to invite the public to either tune into uh DOCOMO Channel one one seven or GTA Channel twenty-one uh to at least uh stay informed in regards to that, the discussion of the draft SEIS with regards to the military relocation. On that note, the committee, this public hearing is hereby concluded. Thank you very much.